Alrighty, good morning. Welcome everybody to our commission meeting for May 28th. I'm gonna call our meeting to order and note that we do have a quorum of commissioners present. Commissioner Joe Kipley is absent today. Before you get started, just silence your cell phones, avoid embarrassment. I'm gonna ask everybody to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, moving on to routine business. Look for a motion to approve our agenda.
Make a motion to approve? Second?
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda. If there's anybody from the public that would like to comment on our consent agenda, now's your opportunity. Our consent agenda is our, kind of our routine, day-to-day business operations of the commission, personnel actions, bills, that type of thing. Nobody running for the mic? Any commission member want to comment or remove anything from the consent agenda? I'd look for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So move.
Second?
Motion in a second. Call the roll.
Bennega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to our regular business. Authorize the chair to sign a joint powers agreement with the city of Sioux Falls for 26th Street County Highway 146. Slurry seal. I'll get it out. Good morning, Steve.
Morning Commissioner Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. Back in 2020, the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaw County worked together to do a mill and overlay on 26th Street, County Road 146, from Veterans Parkway out to South Dakota 42. Being it's been four years, it's time to do a micro-surfacing. We entered into conversations over the winter with the city and agreed the best route would be to use the city's contract to perform this work. Looking for your approval to go into a joint agreement with the city for this project.
Alright, questions for Steve? Public comment on this agenda item. Commission action.
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
Motion in a second. Call the roll.
Bennega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to authorize the chair to sign a joint powers agreement with the city of Hartford for the county Highway 151 slash Western Avenue traffic study. What are we studying, Steve?
We're gonna study the traffic corridor, Mr. Chair. Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. The city of Hartford has experienced rapid growth in recent years. They approached the county two years ago about going together on, looking at doing some improvements to Western Avenue, Highway 151. We applied for funds from the Sioux Falls MPO and were awarded funds this year to complete a traffic study. This was a request to sign the JPA with the city Hartford to proceed with this project. We have selected JEO consultants to perform this work. We hope to have that contract to you at your next meeting.
What's the end result? What's potential outcomes of the study?
Mr. Chair, we look at, there should be some intersection improvements, road improvements, pedestrian improvements, just looking at what future needs this corridor would need.
Is that whole thing owned by the county, or?
It's about 50/50. The city owns the east side of 151 from Mickelson Road, most of that up to State 38. And then there's pockets north of there that the city's annexed.
Any other questions? Public comment. Commission action.
Make a motion to approve? Second?
Motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on, Register of Deeds Annual Commission Briefing. Good morning.
Good morning Commissioner Samantha Halsey, Register of Deeds. Today I just have a quick recap of the past year for you from the Register of Deeds office. Get the PowerPoint up. Sorry. PowerPoint. Perfect, okay. Thank you. Awesome. Alright, so just some numbers to start here. As you can see, we had quite a dramatic decline in recordings from 2022 to 2023. 2022, we were still seeing some of those refinances, a little bit more of that seller's market for real estate. In 2023, we really dropped off. So overall, we had a 21% decrease in recordings of deeds, a 30% decrease in mortgages, and a 16% decreases in Platts. Those three really make up most of our recordings. Then for the vital records side, there wasn't as much of a change. As you can see, the only one that stayed above was death certificates. We just, you know, people are ordering more. They have more assets that they need to access. It doesn't necessarily mean that there was more deaths in the county. Those are just total certified copies that we're selling. So to compare to several years back, we were even lower than 2019. I think if I went back, it would be comparable to 2017 was our 2023 numbers. And we really had that big spike in 2021. So now in 2024, you'll see this April here. Don't get too excited about that. That's not recordings or transfer fees. We actually did a project with a title company and they're buying a bunch of copies back so that they can have a fully digital plant. So they've paid us about $100,000 for that already. And that's mostly in that April timeframe. So we'll see a little bit better numbers this year. But as for our recordings and our transfer fees, it's still pretty low. Here's the breakdown of where the dollars actually come from. The biggest chunk is these transfer fees. So 50 cents of every $500 or a dollar of every $1,000 of a transfer. So when we see those big projects going like Lake Loraine, that's where we're making most of our money is from those transfer fees when they're changing hands and there's money or consideration. Then everything else just kind of falls in line behind. Of course, the recording feeds are second. We still add those up pretty quickly. And the vital records add up to quite a bit, too. To break down where those dollars go then, the $30 recording fee for every recorded real estate transaction, $25 of that goes to the general fund and $5 is kept with the Register of Deeds office. It's, the M&amp;P fund is where we can use money to support if we have a book that breaks or our new technology is coming out of the M&amp;P fund. We keep $3 of that in the county and $2 goes to the state and then it gets dispersed to all the counties so that the other smaller counties that don't have as many recordings can actually keep their records safe for the state as well. If we don't have good records, then we don't have a very stable society.
Amanda, just let me interrupt you. What does the state have to do with birth and death certificates? Do they also register them too? Can you request one from them?
Yes.
As well as from the county?
So on the birth certificates, if somebody goes through the state to get a birth, death, marriage certificate, the state keeps all that money. So we can issue a vital record from anywhere in the state. Since it's a statewide system, if somebody was born in Mitchell, we can still, and they moved here, they can come here and they can get that birth certificate from us. As you can see, we only keep $5 of that and the state still gets $10 of it. So they provide us the paper to print. We provide the electricity and the M&amp;P hardware, which I would think is more expensive. But they facilitate all of the EVRS system that we print those from. So I guess it kind of evens out.
Are those fees set by the counties, each one individually, or by the state?
It's in state statute.
That we can charge five and they can charge 10?
Yep.
Interesting, okay.
Yep.
Just to clarify, it's $15 regardless of where you go, right?
Exactly, yes.
But we get to keep five of the 15 if we provide the service.
Yep. Yep. Marriage certificates, on the other hand, we keep all of that because when we issue a marriage license, we only get $10 of the $40. And the state doesn't issue any marriage licenses. So the counties do all of the work issuing the marriage license and then they say, well, you figure that that customer's gonna come back and get their certified copy from the same county. Doesn't always work that way. They don't have to do that. But we get to keep the whole $15 of the certified copies. And then, what did we not touch? Copy fees. So all of the copy fees from that title company that we're working with, any surveyors, anyone who comes in and gets a copy. It's a dollar per page to the general public and that all goes to the general fund here for the county. So in total, for the general fund, we brought in 2.4 million dollars. And then we kept $72,000 for the M&amp;P fund. Like I said, we're using that money for our new software. I'm gonna use it this next year for some plaque cabinets. Anything that's maintenance and preservation, we can use that money for. So we've got a good bit of reserve right now, even though we didn't make as much as what we would end up spending on that entire new software. We'll still be fine. We have a good chunk of change in that. And that's set by the statute as well. About 11 years ago, the registers of deeds all got together and they said, "Look, we need something to guarantee that we're keeping our records well-maintained." So they came up with that fund. It increased the general fee for recordings and it made it a flat fee, so the title companies were happy. And now we can actually keep our books. And then for the state, which is for the vital records department in the state, we made almost $200,000 for them. And then this number I just wanted to throw in there as well to bring to your attention. I think that it's been a conversation a lot in the last year with the county aid liens, but our office is kind of the last place where they land. And so we're entering in the amount, we're entering in the lien E. And so we, our office entered 13,750 entries. That's not people, that's entries of county aid liens. And that totaled about $7.1 million of county aid liens for the Minnehaw County. Alright, in total recap, we did end up going away from in-house microfilming. So now we send all of our images that we capture daily out to the state and they make microfilm for us and send it back. So that saves about 10 to 15 hours of staff time per week from having to do that in-house feeding it into the microfilmer. And we get much better images back. We had two staff retirees and I only hired back one. So we're currently one staff member short. We have been for the last year. I don't necessarily see backfilling that position anytime soon, but I would like to keep it there because if we got back to interest rates like we had in 2020, we will likely need that 12th person again. There was just a couple things that affected our office in the legislature this year. HB 1098 provides free birth certificates to people experiencing homelessness. So what that means is currently, usually if somebody doesn't have the $15 to get their birth certificate to get them started at a new job, they'll go to a local organization, a church, or another nonprofit and they'll ask for that $15 and those nonprofits are footing the bill. And instead, the state said, "Let's just have them do an affidavit." It's a homeless service provider needs to sign the affidavit and then the recipient of the birth certificate also has to sign. And then they come bring that to us and it's a fee waiver, just like the baseball fee waiver or the Head Start fee waiver. So again, our county only makes $5 on those anyways, so it's not as much of a loss to us as it is to the state. They did their financial study and they didn't really include us in it, which I was a little bit upset about, but it's the state. And then we had SB 211, which revises notarial acts, which allows for remote online notarization. It's allowing for it in general to all participants of notarization, but it does affect our office because we don't, our office specifically doesn't currently e-record. So it put a stipulation in there. If it's a remote online notarization, we still have to have a wet signature of a notary beyond that, somebody locally, and it has to be a South Dakota-approved notary. We can't have remote online notarization from any other state. So that kind of made me a little bit more comfortable with it. And then upcoming for this next year, we're gonna continue digitizing our old records. We've got so many records back that when people are doing research for their genealogies or really digging into where the chain of command or chain of custody went missing for property, they're back in our books. And then our books are kind of falling apart already and we have the money to fix some of them, but not to fix all of them. So the sooner we can get them all digitized, the better. We're gonna keep working on Doc Pro implementation. We did get a new project manager just in the last couple of months. So hopefully the ball's rolling a little bit better now than it was before. We had a meeting, Monty and I had a meeting just last week with our new project manager. So that was hopeful. And then I kind of mentioned before, I would like to acquire two new plaque cabinets. It's gonna cost about $42,000. But that should give us room for Platts for about nine years, between eight and nine years if we see the current plat numbers that we have the last couple of years. So again, that money can all come out of M&amp;P. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you Amanda. Questions from the commission?
I have a question for you.
Commissioner Blainberg?
Thank you Amanda. When you digitize the records, then do you have to maintain the physical copies? Or are you working to get rid of those? Are we storing them?
No, we keep everything that we have. We're just making sure that we get it on the computer so that people aren't having to go back into the books, but we'll always have to keep that physical copy. We always have to have the physical copy or a microfilm copy and then while we're digitizing, we can count that as our backup.
Thank you.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a briefing, but we do take public comment. Anybody from the public want to address this agenda item? Alright, then moving on. Briefing on proposed retirement recognition updates to the policies and procedures manual. Carrie Dever?
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. The next two items on the agenda, both are policy-related. This first one is just a quick briefing on an upcoming request to edit the retirement recognition policy to reference that we're excluding gift cards or anything of a cash equivalent because of the taxation issues. Any questions on that one?
Pretty simple.
Yep. Our hope is to bring that back to you sometime during one of the next two meetings for approval then. And the next agenda item, I'm gonna ask Monty Wadambach to come in this way.
I think we have to take.
Absolutely.
Oh no, wait, that's just a briefing. Any public comment on that agenda item? Moving on then to number 12. Briefing on proposed updates to the E-Policy section of the employee handbook. Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners, Monty Wadambach, Minnehaw County IT. Today is just a briefing on a change to the employee handbook, specifically Section 15 of the employee handbook, which is related to IT. We added Section 15 dot 11 dot 11, which is related to artificial intelligence. We just wanted the handbook to have some language in it regarding AI and encourage its ethical and appropriate use. And caution on the fact that AI kind of takes in information that you're typing. So caution against putting sensitive information, make that a part of the policy. And while we were doing that, we just kind of cleaned up some of the language, updated a few things. Just really, just kind of to go through and do a review and update it. So this is just a briefing. If you have questions now or anytime between now and I believe the next meeting where this will be, we'll ask for it to be implemented is June 11th. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
Questions from the commission? Commissioner Bender?
So I just appreciate you and Carrie and HR working on this. And I know this is a big issue that people are trying to stay ahead of and it's hard to stay ahead of it as it changes so much. So can you just briefly summarize what the rules are for the county employees when they are using AI?
Yeah, so just to kind of summarize, when using artificial intelligence, depending on how you're using it or logged in, it may be taking what you're typing in and using it to advance its model, right? So typing in or entering anything that would be sensitive, any sort of personally identifiable information, is not something that a county employee should do. Taking the work of AI and taking credit for that is also something that is discussed in this policy and should be used with caution. Let's see, ethical use of it, you know, just not using it for anything malicious. Trying to do this off.
Oh no, sorry. I didn't mean to put you on, yeah.
That's alright. Those are the big points. It's just being careful with it. And in my opinion, the biggest thing is just don't put sensitive information into it.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Please.
So really, this is, from my mind, it's just kind of helping people to understand the topic, the best practices and using it.
And to go along with that, we probably really need to follow this up with some education because I'm certain that not every employee is out there just reading the new IT policy section of our handbook regularly or watching this meeting. So we'll try to follow this up at some point with an email, just kind of summarizing it, referencing some items in the handbook. So that's something that we should do moving forward.
Do sites using AI inform you when you're on it? Could somebody inadvertently be using AI and not recognize that they are doing so?
Certainly, yes. So if you, if any of you have not used AI and you just want to see what all the hype is about, it used to be that you had to create an account and log in and took a little bit of effort. It's simpler now. If you just go to Bing.com and up at the top, click on Copilot, you don't have to log in. And if you're not logging in, they are taking your information. There's other, some other implementations where if it's a pay-for-service and you're logging in, then they're not taking your information. But anyways, just on Bing, if you go to Copilot, you can ask it questions and it interacts with you. We've used it to create PowerShell scripts. If there's something wrong with it, it will, and we try it and we say, "This doesn't work, we're getting this error." We can enter that back into the AI, into the Copilot and it will respond back and say, "Oh, I'm sorry, you should add this parameter or make this change." So it's interactive and works better than just a typical, let's say, a Google search in that there's not just all these different website hits with information. It's giving you one answer back based on all of the information that it has. And can, you know, be, it can write papers. Those are the basic uses of it. It can also be used to take a sampling of someone's voice and then I could apply a whole bunch of words into that voice sample. And it could be used potentially in a malicious fashion in that way and same thing with video and pictures and other things. So those are maybe the more advanced, but kind of some of the scary uses of it as well.
Thanks.
Alrighty. Thank you, Monty. And Carrie, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off there.
And thanks to Carrie and Eric both for, Eric did a lot of the language cleanup and Carrie did most of the heavy lifting on this. We got some examples from other local governments and other organizations.
Excellent. Thank you. Any public comment on the E-Policy section of the employee handbook? Alright, this was a briefing. It'll come back for commission action, as you said, probably June 11th. Alright, first, reading and authorize auditor publish notice of public hearing on June 25th, 2024 for zoning text amendment 2403. Good morning Scott.
Thank you, Scott Anderson, Planning Director. Today's relatively a routine action item. Requesting you to set a hearing date, as you indicated, for June 25th, 2024 at 5:00 PM. This would be in front of the Joint City-City Commissions. It would be a joint meeting. We have been in the process of updating our joint zoning ordinance to include long-term rental and leases of properties in the joint area. You may, this may sound all familiar to you because we already have gone through the county and we've updated our county zoning ordinance and now we're in the process of updating the joint city of Sioux Falls and county ordinance. And eventually, when we have a meeting scheduled with Dell Rapids, with the Planning Commission of Dell Rapids, we'll include that. And so you'll be seeing this yet a third time when we amend the joint city of Dell Rapids and county ordinance. But for today, I am asking that you set that hearing date at June 25th at 5:00 PM. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the commission? Public comment on this item? I'd look for action from the commission.
Make a motion to authorize the auditor to publish the notice?
Second.
Second.
We had a June 25th hearing date. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Juvenile Detention Center Annual Commission Briefing. When do we change your name to the Juvenile Justice Center, Jamie? When it's done?
We kind of have a little bit on some things and some things we haven't. Jamie Grabat, Juvenile Justice Center. Good morning Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to tell you a little bit about what we've been going through the past year and what we're looking forward to during this year and the next. I'm gonna be talking to you a little bit about some challenges that we have, some numbers from the last year, some good things, some opportunities, and then talking about one of the major staffing or one of the major budget issues that I'm asking you for this year. So start off by talking about some of our challenges. One of the main things that we're encountering over the last year and a half to two years is the number of assaults that we're seeing inside our facility. Broke it down for you into assaults that are, where there's a youth victim, another, it's youth on youth crime, or if there's a staff victim. The numbers have increased from 2023, or excuse me, 2022 to 2023. They're down a little bit so far into 2024. One of the big things that you'll notice is that in 2023, 47% of the assaults that happened were committed by six of our youth. So it's not constant. We know we have some challenges with some youth and it kind of takes me into the next one, but there was one more point I wanted to make about that. Most of the assaults that happen where our staff or the victim are, while we're trying to restrain the youth and they're flailing around, we might get hit, scratched, sometimes bit, spit on, those types of things. So it's not an outright attack against our staff. It's usually in a reaction to something that's going on. I would say outright attacks on our staff have been less than five. The next topic is the special needs youth. We're seeing a lot of kids coming in with more and more mental health issues, a lot more severe mental health issues. We have kids that have some different developmental issues that they're struggling with. It could be autism, it could be low IQs, it could be a lot of different things. These kids really struggle when they're confronted and they're not in an environment that they're used to. They struggle managing the routine at first. So then they check into their fight or flight. They don't have the opportunity to flee, so a lot of times they react violently. The longer they're there, we start getting them into a routine, things start getting better. But these cases seem to take longer than most other cases because they're so complex. Our overall average length of stay, though, even with these longer cases and some of these adult cases, is still sitting at a decent number at just under 20 days for our youth. So it can be challenging, but we've learned more and more as we see more of these kids on how to get them into the routine faster and kind of eliminate some of the problems that we've been having in the past. It's just really unfortunate to see that we're the environment that they're in. A lot of times, they act out violently, so then they come to us. But they really need a lot more help than what we're there for. I mean, we're there to get them through the court process and hopefully find something better. But a lot of the placements that they utilize for these challenging youth, we'll either deny them or they kick them out fairly fast after they get there because they might have a violent reaction. So it's very difficult to deal with these kids because they need so much. You want so much for them, but there's just not a lot of. you want so much for them, but there's just not a lot out there right now. Another challenge we have is our medical costs continue to rise. Our nursing hours needed have risen from 30 hours to 35 hours a week now. We still run on a part-time basis with our nurse. In addition to the medical costs that you'll see rising this year is Turnwell has been being, has been being paid for through the ARPA funds. That'll now be a general fund cost and it's around $36,000 a year. We continue to have some turnover issues, not as bad as we did in 2022. They're still higher than normal. One of the things that we understand in our facility is we're in entry level position into the corrections field, into law enforcement, those types of things. Many of our, our, our staff that we're hiring, we're getting a good number from the law enforcement program out at Southeast Technical College. We also get a good number from the University of Sioux Falls. But we also understand they're coming, they're getting some experience and their goal, ultimate goal is either to get onto probation, parole, or into the law enforcement areas that our state has to offer. One of the things that's helped us with that though is some of the relationships that we've had with like USF, AGI, again, Southeast Technical College. We, we work with USD every chance we have. SDSU doesn't contribute as many into our area, but occasionally we get to work with them as well. One of the things that we tried to do to retain some of our staff is we try to get them as involved as possible. So one of the things might be a committee within the Juvenile Justice Collaborative. It could be training them to be a trainer in certain areas such as safe crisis management, motivational interviewing, something like that. It could be a pre-investigator and internal investigator, things like that to keep, keep them involved in different things and, and show that they're important to us. I'm going to transition now into some numbers that we, we've had over the last year. As you can see, they're, they're pretty steady. Admissions, we had five fewer than the year before. Bed days, we planned for 10,600 and we hit 10,577. So I already talked about the average length of stay. The important thing in this area is, is you look at the average daily population, Bill Garnos had planned for us to be at an average daily population of 34 youth a day. By 2026, I don't see us being at that level. By 2026, it'd be beyond that. So we use that, just like the jail does, to plan for when to open new housing units in our new facility. We'll be able to delay those in the future. And, you know, just kind of like what you've seen with the jail. We can continue to compare it to Bill Garnos's projections, but we'll still use the 80% capacity type thing to determine when the next, the next housing unit should open. When we open the facility, we're planning for a population of 48 initially. Some good things that we're seeing, we rely heavily on volunteers. I talk about this every year, but we have amazing volunteers that come to JDC. They provide outstanding programming, all kinds of different types of things. We have religious activities, we have art therapy activities, we have individual counseling people are providing. That's been a huge addition this year. VOA has a grant where they're providing free counseling for kids once a week. We have a, a retired individual that comes out and provides free counseling for kids, for, for kids for an hour a week. And it's been a great addition to Turnwell activities and just having that weekly counseling for some of these longer term kids that are there. It's really been beneficial. And as you know, our facility, it's, it's well underway. They've been moving a lot of dirt, getting close to starting to pour some footings. They've tore down the, the part that they were going to tear down initially. It's, it's moving right along. We're proud or we're happy with the progress that they're making. So moving into opportunities, I talked again about the facility. We've put together a team of our staff. This is another example of trying to, to keep them involved is what we're calling the transition team. We're basically walking through every area of the facility as if we were youth coming into the building, walking through their day, walking through the housing areas, intake, nursing availability type things, and we're doing it side by side with our policy, making sure everything matches. And then they're also the team that's going to be planning when we move the youth over from our existing facility into the new facility, they'll have that whole thing outlined for us before we move. We're also gonna, for the first time, start classifying kids. We haven't done that before because there really wasn't advantage. We've done some minimal stuff like a pre-evaluation, kind of looking whether they're leaning more towards like a perpetrator or a victim. So then we try to house accordingly, but with the way our current facility is, we have long wings. We have a male wing and a female wing. That's all we have to use. So in the new facility, we'll be able to put the kids that are higher risk in one area, lower risk in another. We can use a lot of different things to determine who belongs where and help keep people safe that way. We're upgrading some technology. This past year, we added Policy Tech at the suggestion of Commissioner Bender. They've been using it at the jail. It allows us to have our policy online. It helps us easy, it makes it easier to review policy and assign it to staff to review and test them on what they've reviewed, those types of things. And then it, it keeps an online version of any changes that we make so we can go back to any certain date and pull a policy as it was on that date versus any revisions that we've made since then. So it's a, a tool that jail loves and so far, we're loving it too. We're also going to be utilizing Guardian RFID in the new facility. The jail also uses this. It's the, the type of system to keep track of where inmates are at all times, do our room checks, our safety checks, those types of things, and it's a good risk management tool. And then the Juvenile Justice Collaborative has really become more active. Commissioner Blumberg is one of the co-chairs. She can attest to this as well. We've assigned out different committee assignments to people that are on the, the collaborative. All those committees have been meeting. We're, we're excited to get things rolling and getting more people involved in all the, the activities within the system, the juvenile system in our area and start making some progress as we continue to move forward with that. And then the hardest part to talk you about is when we were planning for the, the new building, I, I initially had told you that I didn't think we would need any more staff to, to run the facility. I was wrong at that time. We've done a, a study over the past year and I'm going to be asking for four positions this coming year for, three of them, correction officer ones and one correction officer three. So that pretty much wraps it up. Any questions that I can answer?
Questions from the Commission?
Jamie, I get asked frequently about the kids who come to juvenile justice. How many of those get charged as adults by the time they're through that process?
That's a hard, hard one to answer. We currently have eight youth in our facility. They're either in the process of a transfer hearing or have already been convicted of adults.
Is there a way to give us some sort of estimate of the number of admissions that we have that actually end up in that court situation?
I can do some digging and getting some.
Would be interested to know that, frankly.
Okay. On average, we usually have about five of those a day. So it's, it's a significant number when you think that, like today, we have 32 kids and right now we have eight of those are somewhere in the adult system, in the process of trying to figure out if they're going to be in the adult system or have already been convicted in the adult system.
But if they're convicted, they stay with you till their 18th birthday and they're...
Yeah, they either stay with us or Pennington County, where the two that they mainly use. Pennington County has been struggling with some staffing issues. I'm, I'm taking one tomorrow because they don't have room to hold them. So sometimes it's a short stay, like this one will be a three month stay. He'll turn 18 and he'll go on to the penitentiary then. But one of them that we currently have, he's almost 17. So by the time he's done with us, he, he'll be over two years that he'd be with us.
What is the cost per day?
We currently charge 458, 48, and that's pretty much spot on with what our costs are.
450 a day, 30, three times 45, 12,500 a day to run your facility roughly?
Yeah.
Probably close?
Probably close.
Okay. And what's your staff ratio to your?
We have to, we have to maintain an eight youth to one staff ratio. So that's kind of why we designed our new facility the way we did. The housing units will have eight beds per housing unit so that we can have one staff run that housing unit and be with those kids, whether they're transitioning to a gym or classroom or whatever. But they'll be with them the full eight hours.
Okay. Commissioner Bender?
So to follow up on that question about staffing, and I know that you don't bring a request forward for new staff lightly, the, the new staff that you're proposing, would they start at the beginning of the year? Are you thinking, when, when would they phase in?
One of them would start right away, the first of the year, that JCO three that I'm asking for. If, if I'm allowed that position, that one would start full year. The other three would start half year. We would have enough time to have them hired by July 1st and they'd be fully trained to help with that transition into the new facility and keep the new facility running.
And can you just remind us the date that you think the new facility will be operational?
Right now, I'm guessing September of '25 for the new, for phase one, where we'll move the kids into the new housing area. And then like admin staff will be in temporary housing within that part of the facility. At that time, they'll tear down the existing facility and build phase two.
Thanks.
Have a question.
Commissioner Blumberg?
Thank you, Jamie. Your staff does a great job with a very difficult population or challenging population. I was just curious, when you were talking about retention and the extra opportunities that you offer for staff, is there any compensation for staff that's willing to take on more opportunities?
No, not really. Most of them don't take a lot of time. It's an opportunity for them. It, it, it's helpful with retention, but it might hurt us with retention because they're also networking in a lot of these positions. So we don't currently have any positions that get additional duty pay.
Okay. And then just one other question I forgot to ask. Do you have any more info on the numbers for the special needs youth that you referenced?
I can get those.
Okay. I'd be curious.
The, the problem is, is it can be very low, but they're so staff intensive, especially when they first arrive in our facility. Until we can get that routine established, they're, they're taking up a lot of staff time. Sometimes it's one-to-one staff with them, which in our current way of doing things really harms us because we really need the staff out on the floor, in classrooms and those types of things. So.
And I know you mentioned that you would be working on classification for the new system.
Yes.
How would that fit with special needs youth or do we not know yet?
We, we would look at, at how to house them properly. I would think that even though they tend to act out violently, they're still going to score pretty low. So they might not be with the type of kid that would set them off like they currently are. So we're, we're definitely looking at that as part of our classification system.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bender?
So, so sorry to keep peppering you with questions. You've done a great job on your report. And I know one of the things that you probably just felt like you didn't have much time to talk about and there's not a lot new, but can you just remind us of some of the alternatives for youth that come into the system that don't necessarily put them in your facility, in the actual Juvenile Justice Center?
Sure. Well, there's diversion programs that are part of the state's attorney's budget. Those are for kids that are usually first time offenders, trying to keep them completely out of the system, giving them an opportunity to get some help before they enter the court and then hopefully we'll never see them in the court. Some of the alternatives, alternatives that JDC specifically is responsible for is we have the Evening Report Center. It's an after-school program for kids that are still pre-adjudication. It gives them the opportunity to, to go to LSS, have a meal, get some homework help, do some community service type projects and then learn some life skills. We also have the Reception Center. You know, it used to be, there'd be times where law enforcement didn't have anything to do with the kid after arrest because they can't find a parent or parent's not available till they get off work and those types of things. A lot of times those kids would either be held in shelter care till the next morning or in detention sometimes. Now they can go to LSS Reception Center. LSS will work to reunite them with the family so that the law enforcement people can get back out onto the streets. They also are part of their shelter, we have their shelter care, which is usually for lower level or lower risk type individuals. That is a, a cheaper alternative than secured detention. Part of that is a runaway and homeless youth project where kids can come there and get help if they have nowhere to go. Those are the, the main ones that we utilize. We also have community supervision as part of JDC's program. Those are kids that they need a little more help and guidance navigating while their court is going on, but they don't necessarily need to be locked up for 24 hours. So we have our staff that'll be out supervising them. They usually have an electronic monitor on. Sometimes they'll have a, a continuous alcohol monitor on their leg as well. They utilize the Evening Report Center a lot, just kind of keeping these guys scheduled and active. Yes.
If I could throw one more out to you, Jamie, how many of your 32 are non-Minihaa County?
I think 17 of them are Minihaa County kids.
So about 50/50.
That's usually what it is.
Is that right? And we partner with like 17 other counties, couple of them in Minnesota. You, you mentioned the one being there for two years. Is that a Minihaa County or is that a?
He was convicted out of Davison County.
I mean, that's $160,000 a year to that county, I mean, just for that one kid in our jail.
Well, until they're adjudicated. Once they're adjudicated, then the Department of Corrections pays that.
Oh, that, oh, really? Then the DOC pays you, not the county?
Yeah, once they're, I, I'm using the wrong term. Once they're convicted in adult term or in adult court, then DOC starts paying that bill.
Do they pay the full 450?
Yep.
Oh, good. It's interesting because they don't always. All righty. If there's no other questions, I'll open it up for public comment.
Can I make just one more?
Please.
Everybody pays the same amount.
Good to know.
It's, there's no discounts for anyone.
Public comment. All righty, this is a briefing. Appreciate you doing that, Jamie. Good presentation. All right. Next Tuesday, we don't have a Commission meeting. I heard there's an election going on. But on June 10th, my daughter turns 30 and that has nothing to do with the meeting, but we do need a Commissioner that will chair that meeting because I will have an official designee, as will Commissioner Benega in his absence, and will Commissioner Kipli. So we'll have designees for our positions for the canvas of the election, but we do need to elect a Commission Chair pro tem for that meeting.
Good morning, Commission. Meredith Jericho, Commission Office. I think Commissioner Karski kind of covered everything. So yeah, asking the Commission to consider a motion to elect the Commission Chair pro tem for the official canvas of the primary election on June 10th.
All right. Questions for Meredith? Public comment? My understanding, Meredith, from the Auditor's Office is at that canvas, there will also be a drawing of 5% of the precincts to determine which precincts are audited. So that'll be something that'll be different during the canvas that we haven't done in the past as required by state statute. So there'll be somewhat of a drawing or there will be an actual drawing of five random precincts to be audited. Am I missing anything?
Don't believe so.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion?
I'm going to open up to public comment first, if I could. Anybody here for public comment on this agenda item? All right. I'll give the floor to you, Commissioner.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Bender to chair the June 10 meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We didn't give you a chance to accept or deny, so you are going to be the chair on that.
I know you were rushing through that.
All righty. Moving on to our regular agenda is done, to public comment. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the Commission about any non-agenda item? All righty. Moving on to Commission Liaison Reports. Commissioner Blumberg?
I can just share that the Abandoned Cemetery Board has begun meeting again over the summer. They meet monthly, and they plan to visit the 13 abandoned cemeteries to visit them and check out what kind of needs that they might have. And I just wanted to give a big thank you to that board and to the people involved for the work that they do to care for those. There's quite a few challenges, I think, that they overcome to be able to maintain them. And then I just also wanted to mention that the Summer Reading Program is kicking off at the library, and they're reporting good numbers of various age groups. So there's programs for birth through all ages.
All righty. Any other liaison reports? I had a meeting at 8 o'clock this morning, the Public Defender's Office Advisory Board. We went over personnel updates. Their turnover has been, I think, zero for the last several months or this year to date, so that's, I think, a great thing to have going on. They are hiring their summer interns, law students and so forth for, that need to intern for their work. Their budget's on track. They're going to be adding, parsing out their budget more to bring, when we look at it here in a couple of weeks for budget hearings, more detailed information on where they're spending their money, especially when it comes to professional services. And we're also going to be getting a memorandum of understanding for the work that they do with Southeastern Behavioral Health. So that'll be coming at the June 11th meeting. So just FYI, it just basically sets the groundwork for the, what the PDO does and what Southeastern Behavioral Health does. It's a great working relationship, not just because we don't have to pay them anything, but the work that they do has been very beneficial for the county and for its citizens. I'm looking, I think I had a few other meetings. I had a Chamber of Commerce Monthly Board Meeting last week. Talked a lot about the tax referendum stuff coming with sales tax and that type of thing. So the Chamber is looking at taking a position on that. Really doesn't impact us. We don't get any sales tax, but it definitely could have an impact to the communities within the county. So depending on how that all plays out, so. I missed a meeting with Human Services that I got scheduled for tomorrow. I think a lot of the Commissioners have already been through that, so that'll be tomorrow's day. That's all I got. Any other liaison reports? Non-action Commission discussion? Commissioner Benega?
I don't know if it, excuse me, I'm not sure if it's a discussion-action, but yesterday I had the wonderful experience of attending the Veterans Memorial Conversations and Speeches and Music and all that kind of stuff at the Alliance. And I don't know why, I lost my voice this morning, but anyway, very impressive, 45 minutes or so of time that was spent with people who had lost loved ones or family members or whatever, and it was one of those things I highly encourage people attend. And I'm sorry for my voice.
Thank you, Commissioner Benega, and thank you to our veterans, especially those that did give it all. All righty. Nothing else, then I will look for a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of South Dakota Codified Law 125, 2134, and 6.
Second?
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We will enter executive session. Tom, will that be in here? Okay.